Welcome to Georgetown County Council meeting. Today is May 14, 2024. The time is now 5:30 6 PM. This meeting of Georgetown County Council is being called to order. Again, welcome to all of you who are here. We ask Councilor Carolina to give us the invocation and lead us in Pledge of Allegiance.
Almighty and eternal Father, we praise and thank you for calling us to serve your people. Continue to give us your nodding and help us to be the vessel of the grace to touch the lives of your people. Father, use us as a channel of your compassion. Help us to be worthy of your trust that we may be an instrument of peace and hope to all in Georgetown County. Give us courage to be an agent of change to achieve your dream of transformation. Finally, we ask you to heal our land and restore faith and righteousness in our nation. This we ask in your holy name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every deed and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilor Carolina. We move down to the approval of our agenda. Party agenda being approved, we asking that the agenda be amended to include proclamation number 24-18. Can I get a motion to amend the agenda to include proclamation number 2418?
So moved.
The move by Councilor Carolina is their second.
Second.
Second by Councilor McCallum. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. That item will be moved to 4E. Okay. Now, can I get a motion for the approval of the agenda with the included amendment?
So moved.
Move by Councilor Elliott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Newton. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We'll move down to our special reports and presentations. Our nonprofit spotlight this evening would be the Open Space Institute. And we have Ms. Erin Page on behalf of the Open Space Institute to make the presentation. Welcome.
Thank you Chairman Moran. Ladies and gentlemen of the county council, appreciate the opportunity to be here. I work for, my name is Erin Page. I work for the Open Space Institute. And we are an organization dedicated to land conservation for people, for communities, and also for wildlife. We have worked for lands along the eastern seaboard, up and down the eastern seaboard for 50 years. OSI, if we're called, opened an office in South Carolina just 10 years ago and since then have protected some 130,000 acres along the, mostly along the coast of South Carolina. Today, I'm going to focus my remarks on the impactful work we are doing in Georgetown County, much of which is concentrated on the Black River. Just a quick, brief thing about the Black River. It is a South Carolina born and bred river. It starts in Lee County. It winds its way through five different counties and empties into the Winyah Bay and on into the ocean. It is a pristine Black River that has been largely inaccessible to most people because there are so few public landings along the way. And what we are calling the Black River Initiative Park Project aims to protect and preserve the natural beauty and ecological health of the Black River. This initiative goes way beyond just land conservation. It's about creating lasting benefits for our community through enhanced quality of life, access to recreation, ecotourism, and economic development. During COVID and ever since COVID, South Carolina parks have never been so popular. Across the state, residents and visitors alike are clamoring to get outside and to connect with our unique natural heritage. The most anticipated new park in South Carolina is not just one park, but a network of 12 new parks along the Black River. This is the first state park. It's a linear state park. It's connected by the Black River. The lands that are park lands are not contiguous, but the river connects them all. It's the first state park in 15 years in our state. And the Black River has emerged as an important access, as asset for advancing economic progress. This park extends 70 miles from King Street on down to Andrews and to Rocky Point in Georgetown County and includes state parks, county parks, town parks, and privately owned parks. In Georgetown County alone, there are seven parks on the Black River, including five new state parks that have yet to open, but will soon begin doing so. The Black River State Park Manager, an employee of the State Parks Recreation and Tourism Agency, is with me here tonight, John Moon. I want to introduce you to John Moon. He is a new member of our, resident of Georgetown County. John, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Oh, I'm John Moon. I am the park manager of Black River State Park, and I've been with the South Carolina State Park Service for 25 years. So I've lived in like several nooks and crannies throughout the state and seven, I think seven parks are together. So it's a job I love. It's a job that I cherish, and I cherish even more so, the opportunity to make a difference in people's lives. And I think that's what we will see with the, with the opening of the Black River State Parks and the Parks Network and the Water Trail, I think, from Williamsburg County down through Georgetown. So it's, it's an honor to be with the great citizens of Georgetown County, Williamsburg County, and appreciate the opportunity to be here today. And lastly, I invite you guys to come and, you know, take an opportunity to come out and show you guys some of the master plannings, some of the ideas that we have, what we're hoping to be able to do, you know, at the park in different tracks or maybe out of our Andrews track or even where I'm at, located just outside of Brown's Ferry Land and not too far in the Willie Towne community. So again, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. Looking forward to working with you all in the future.
Thank you, John. So glad for you to be here today. John and I get to work really closely together. And what you see on your overhead screen there is a really an updated map of the state parks, as well as some private parks have been delineated there too. But you'll see all the different parks that are along the Black River that are all new. And most of them are yet to be open to the public, but there's lots and lots of work that are going on behind the scenes. In fact, just in the last five years, the partners that have been working on this park network have acquired more than 6,000 acres for public use and secured approximately $13 million for park infrastructure funding. And an interesting fact is that 40% of South Carolina's residents live within 100 miles, a half day drive of the Black River. And it's estimated that the new park network will support 100,000 to 150,000 visitors annually, which indicates to me, and I hope to you guys too, an enormous potential economic benefit for the rural communities that are surrounding the Black River. Here in Georgetown County, we see families returning year after year to enjoy our beaches and Huntington State Park. By protecting the Black River and opening public parks around the Black River, that will allow us to collectively, as a county and as a community, to develop sustainable tourism activities like kayaking, biking, hiking, bird watching, guided nature tours, and attracting visitors to the western part of the county and driving economic growth countywide as a result. There are three projects that I just wrote quickly, real briefly, that are related to this Black River project that I want to draw your attention to. First, just six months ago, the Open Space Institute acquired an 1,800 acre parcel of land, just a stone's throw from downtown Andrews. This was owned, it was owned previously by a warehouse or a timber company, and we were able to acquire that and have since transferred ownership to the state PRT agency. And that 1,800 acre parcel will become a public state park just outside of Andrews. And this is going to offer the town of Andrews and the county an unprecedented opportunity to seize ecotourism visitors from all over the state and probably regionally as well. And just like John mentioned, there's a lot of work and planning. What's going to happen on that, that beautiful piece of property? Another project that's sort of been born out of this is the potential, and this is on the table now, but a Black River Environmental Career Center, housed at Andrews High School. This is an idea that was born out of a community focused group of educators where there were school board members and the high school principal, as well as some teachers, who thought there's so much activity that's going to happen here, and there's going to be careers and opportunities for jobs in western Georgetown County centered around the nature and outdoors, managing parks, maintaining parks, maintaining grounds, being in forestry, which there's already a big opportunity for careers there. But looking at ways to attract students into career tracks that may not be a four-year school kind of university track, but a track where you get out of high school and you've got a career already in, in your community, working alongside parks in many different ways. So there's that, that program. And then lastly, we know that in rural parts of our county, a lot of people have not learned to swim and may be uncomfortable around water. And there's going to be unprecedented access to the Black River, a lot more public access, and also a lot more risk if people are not familiar with water. So the Open Space Institute is working on a program to build a portable pool that is modeled after a similar program in Charleston and Collin County. This portable pool will be able to be constructed and deconstructed and moved to different rural communities. We're partnering with the Georgetown wide to provide lifeguards and instructors, and we're going to start this in 2025, in summer, and move it to different locations throughout Williamsburg County and western Georgetown County to make those swim lessons, those swim safety lessons available to kids who may not have the opportunity to get to Georgetown to do that. So lots, these are just a few things that are going on. I wanted to bring you up today. It continues to be an exciting project. We're calling it the Black River Initiative. It's involving a lot of the communities up and down the river. And we're particularly excited about the opportunities that could, could come to the western part of the county, particularly the town of Andrews. So thank you so much for your, your time and your attention. And we're always here to answer questions. And as John said, we'd love to get you all as a council out to visit some sites and see what's going to be happening on the western part of the county.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Over here. I had a couple of questions. Is General Millican involved with you with this? Is he in the middle of this Open Space Institute? Do you know General Millican?
Are you speaking of Tom?
Uh, yes ma'am.
Yes, he has been extremely supportive. He's not intricately involved, but he is absolutely aware of what we're doing.
Okay. The other question I had is this map, some of these areas are massive. Is this all the scale?
Yeah, it is.
Wow. That Black River State Park, it's looking like it's about four miles from east to west. That's huge.
Yeah.
Is it right, right in Andrews there, the darkest green?
Yeah, that's 1,800 acres.
That's the 1,800 acres you were talking about then?
Moving a parcel that's still all about the nature of the service. What you're seeing on there is the southern half of that would be the park. And then the, right now, the northern half of that piece of property is still nature and services, but they should, you know, try to get those added to it to one big track. But yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a big, it's a big tract of land for sure.
Thank you.
Any other comments from council?
Ms. Page, how soon, and Officer Moon, how soon will the portable, portable pool concept be in place?
Councilman, so right now, we're raising money. We've raised about half of what we need to, to launch the program. We have secured all of our partnerships, that would be with a pool company who's going to construct it and get it permitted. We've got a partnership with Charleston County who's teaching us how, how this has been done there. They've been doing this for years now and, and are absolutely willing to share. Williamsburg County is actually going to send their, their parks and rec staff to learn how to put it up, take it down, and house it. So, and so they'll need a trailer to be able to move it around because it's pretty large. And we're aiming to start this in the summer of 2025, hoping to start constructing the pool this fall and have it ready by, by spring next year.
Very good. I believe it was at least 10 to 12 years ago, that was one of our initiatives, trying to come up with the idea, other than the why for a pool for Georgetown County. And that particular year, there was a spike in the number of drownings in Georgetown County, happening in the ocean, private pools in the rivers. So that is an outstanding initiative that we have planned for such a thing. So hopeful speed ahead on that. Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Page, we're in the process of updating our comprehensive plan, and land use element is making its way through. Have you worked with our planning department to allocate green spaces that you all would like to see on our future land use?
Well, we, we were involved in attending some of the, the public meetings and made sure that the consultants that you guys were working with were very aware of these park projects so that it would be reflected accurately on, on your maps. So that, that, that has been done. We're probably sort of nearing the end of our acquisition work. There's been so much of it, as you can see. I mean, it's about 30,000 protected acres along the Black River right now. And we're, we're partnering so well with the state park agency that John's probably hoping that we don't add another part to your, to your management requirement.
They've been doing a lot bigger since I started.
Yeah. But I think, I feel certain that Ms. Richardson and her staff have got, got the maps lined up with what our plans are going forward.
Perfect. Thank you.
Ms. Page, when, with the several sites, and John might can address this, will, will the, there be one grand opening or will we kind of piecemeal open them as, as we get them finished?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll definitely be piecemeal. With the idea of what you see on the map, Black River State Park Unit Two, that's a large tract in the Williamsburg County area. That's, that track was scheduled probably September, October, where we'll have. where we'll have a kayak launch, shelter, potential fishing pier, two-mile trail, trailhead in the bathroom and parking area. That will be the first to open and it'll continue to, it'll continue to, that's not, it won't be finished, but it will have what we call soft openings for people to start to utilize and have new access. Our access points on the river throughout the water trail are kayak canoe launches. So they're not new motorized boat traffic launches. They are for kayaks and canoes, but then you'll still have those launches that exist now for your, for your motorboat activity or.
Is there, is there any, I, I don't know if it's grants or monies from the state, the federal government, the core of engineers, with a problem we talked to earlier concerning the downed trees and stuff in the narrows between Andrews, King Street, and then below Andrews, going on to the Warehouser Track that was just purchased.
There, I know there's a lot of grants and whatnot and a lot of funding that's helped make this possible along with OSI. And then just a friend of mine, a client of mine, and a member of our advisory council, somebody I know, Dr. Moser Rucker, he does a lot of work along the, the Black River for that kind of stuff and putting together those groups to help clean the, the river up and river sweeps and those kinds of things. I do know there's groups that are helping to manage it. I don't know that they, what kind of funding that they get or whatnot. I don't have a thought in my head. But, but overall, there's a lot of grant opportunities and federal monies that are helping to make all of those.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all. Thank you all for what you do for Georgetown County and the state of South Carolina. Thank you for being here this evening. Next we will move to proclamation number 24-14. In recognition of the Georgetown County Public Services Reaccreditation with the American Public Works Association. And as we have a representative from the American Public Works Association is leading to present, Mr. Jim Neal. Good evening.
Appreciate that. My name is Jim Neal. I'm the Technical Director for Engineering and Technology for the American Public Works Association. In my real life, I, or my business life, I worked for an engineering company called Madder and Craig. And in my formal life, I was the Public Works Director for Charleston County. And I found myself lagging as a Public Works Director behind this, this guy from Georgetown County who was an icon of, of Public Works and Public Services, Mr. Ray Funny. And so today, it gives me great pleasure to recognize Ray and his, his team, but also the leadership of the Georgetown County Council, the Administrator, Angela Christian, for your leadership in, in giving him the tools and abilities to become accredited and stay accredited for the fourth time. It is not an easy task. It, it, accreditation is a mark of professionalism. It shows that this agency is committed to continuous improvement, to improving the lives of the, not just their, their members, but the members of this county. And it shows that they have put forth those policies and practices that are necessary and actually recognize for being the right way to do your job. We had a team come down here, one person from Massachusetts, another from Texas, evaluated over 100 different practices and said that their, their results were nearly 100% complete in every single one and that the recommendation was for full reaccreditation after the fourth time, which is very rare. Georgetown County was the second agency in South Carolina to be accredited. Charleston County was third. And now there's, there are six more accredited agencies. Part of that is the leadership that Georgetown County provides for the state and the members of the public services organization that does that. One of the things that I think that, that sets this accreditation apart is there was a model practice that this council enacted in litter control and street cleaning that addresses litter control in the county. We've taken that, that ordinance and the, and the practices that, that Ray has developed and his team has developed in, in, in that practice and sent that to all of our agencies throughout the United States. There's a, we've got, right now, we've got nearly 30,000 members in APWA. And, and these are the kind of things that really help other agencies do their job better. So I just wanted to say thank you and congratulations. Thank you Chairman Moran for having me come to give this presentation. And I think this is an outstanding crew led by their, their accreditation manager. Probably the hardest job in public works is the poor soul that has to beat everybody out to get the, hey, write down this practice, get this done. And I, I understand that Harley's done a great job in getting everybody where they needed to be. So I think, Ray, if you want to bring up the plaque, we'll present that to the, to you and to the council.
Oh, son, get my picture sheet on me. You don't have to do. Put your shoes back on. Barefoot.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Go ahead. Go ahead, Louis. Always.
Congratulations, Ray. Awesome.
The comments you heard after that were sometimes disturbing.
Okay. Okay. We have a proclamation from the council. Ms. Sierra, will you read the proclamation, please?
This is proclamation number 2414. Whereas the Georgetown County Department of Public Services has demonstrated exemplary dedication and commitment to excellence in service delivery to the citizens of Georgetown County. And whereas the American Public Works Association is a prestigious organization dedicated to the advancement of public works professionals and the communities they serve. And whereas through rigorous standards and diligent efforts, the Georgetown County Department of Public Services has achieved reaccreditation by the American Public Works Association, a testament to their unwavering commitment to excellence. And whereas this accreditation signifies the department's adherence to the highest professional standards ensuring the safety, health, and well-being of the residents of Georgetown County. Whereas the Georgetown County Department of Public Services accreditation by the American Public Works Association reflects tireless efforts in infrastructure management, sustainability, and community service. And now therefore be it proclaimed that the Georgetown County Council hereby recognizes and commends the Georgetown County Department of Public Services for their outstanding achievement in attaining reaccreditation by the American Public Works Association.
Thank you. You've heard a reading of the proclamation. Proclamation number 2414 from Ms. Sierra. Is there a motion for adoption of proclamation number 24-14?
So moved.
It's moved by Councilor Anderson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Proclamation number 24-14, Sir Johnson. Congratulations.
One more time. Now I'm not confused.
Yes, we, we want to give a big thank you to our Public Services Department, really. They do a tremendous job for Georgetown County. I really appreciate all of you, all the work you do. Let's give them another round of applause because I don't know what we'd do without them. Thank you. We will move on down to proclamation number 24-16 to proclaim the month of May as Building Safety Month in Georgetown County. I think we have a report from Ms. Richardson.
Yes, sir. Thank you. We are asking you to proclaim the month of May as Building Safety Month in Georgetown County. The theme for this year's Safety Month is Mission Possible, which encourages us all to raise awareness about building safety on a personal, local, and global scale. Construction industry members, which are building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, and design professionals, all work year-round to ensure the safe construction of our buildings. And the International Code Council, to which our building department is members, sponsors Building Safety Month each year in order to remind the public about the critical role of our communities, largely unknown protectors of public safety. These local code officials may help us make sure that our buildings are safe, sustainable, and affordable and are essential to all our prosperity. So we are asking you to proclaim this month as Building Safety Month in Georgetown. Stephen Elliott, who is our building official and leads his team of building inspectors and code safety officials, is here and we'd love to have a photo with you, Mr. Chairman, as well.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any comments from council from Ms. Richardson? Okay, good. You've heard the reading of the proclamation, or the presentation of proclamation from Ms. Richardson, our planning director. And we have Mr. Stephen Elliott here, our building official. Is there a motion for adoption of proclamation number 24-16?
So moved.
Moved by Councilor Newton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Carolina. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Proclamation number 24-16 is adopted. Any need a? Move on to proclamation number 24-17. In reclamation, recognition of Emergency Medical Services Week. We'll have the report from Public Information Officer, Ms. Akers.
Council members, it is my pleasure to present this tonight in the stead of Emergency Services Director Brandon Ellis, who is away at a hurricane conference this week. This is the 50th year of EMS Week. So it is with great honor that I ask you to consider proclaiming next week Emergency Medical Services Week. Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service in every community. These team members are on call and responding to provide lifesaving care 24 hours a day, seven days a week. They never stop. Access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illnesses or injuries. The emergency medical service system consists of emergence, emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, 911 dispatchers, educators, administrators, and more. The theme of this year's celebration is honoring our past and forging our future. And we have a couple of members in the audience tonight who are part of our, our team who are forging the future of emergency services here in Georgetown County. And they also would like their photo taken with you, please. Or more accurately, their director would like their photo taken with you, please.
Okay. Thank you. You've heard the report from Ms. Akers regarding proclamation number 24-17. It's a motion regarding proclamation number 24-17 for approval.
So moved.
It's moved by Councilor Elliott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Carolina. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Proclamation number 24-17 is adopted. Right along, we'll move on to proclamation number 24-24-18, recognizing May as Boating Safety Awareness Month. Ms. Sierra.
Proclamation number 24-18 is in support of National Safe Boating Week. And that will be the week of May 18th through the 24th. On this National Safe Boating Week is observed to bring attention to important lifesaving tips for recreational boaters so that they can have a safer and more fun experience out on the water throughout the year. On average, 650 people die each year in boating relating accidents in the U.S. 75% of these are caused by drowning. The vast majority of these accidents are caused by human error or poor judgment and not by the boat or equipment itself. This proclamation urges all of those who boat to practice safe boating habits and to wear life jackets at all times while boating. And this is another photo op for you, Mr. Chairman. We have Mr. Oliver Liam here as well. If you guys want to stand so you can.
Okay. Okay, we'll go ahead and, and vote on the proclamation. You've heard a report from Ms. Sierra regarding proclamation number 24-18. Is there a motion for approval or proclamation, adoption of proclamation number 24-18?
So moved.
Moved by Councilor Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Newton. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Proclamation number 24-18 is adopted. Proclamation number 24-18 is adopted.
Wear that hanklet, Jeff.
We'll move on down to our public comments. A public comment period is included on each meeting agenda and shall be limited to 30 minutes. Each speaker will be limited to no more than three minutes. No speaker may yield his or her a lot of time to another speaker. Members of the public who wish to address council during the public input period should sign up with a clerk of council before the meeting is called to order. Please note that there's a timer on the screen, and we ask that you conclude your comments promptly upon expiration of that, on that timer. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up for public comment this evening?
There are no speakers signed up this evening.
Okay. All right, great. We move on. We move on down to our consent agenda. There are two matters included on the consent agenda which were approved by virtue of the agenda approval process. That's procurement number 24-013, grass cutting and grounds maintenance for Northern Parks Section. Procurement number 24-014, grass cutting and ground maintenance for Southern Parks Section. We have some items on the, for public hearings. First one is ordinance number 24-08, an ordinance to amend the comprehensive plan, future land use map, regarding 7.0 acres located off Grassy Lane in the Brownsbury community identified as TMS number 02-0404-011-16-02, from low density, medium, from low density to medium density residential. The floor is now open for comments for the public hearing regarding ordinance number 24-08. If someone desires to speak, please do so at this time. Seeing no one speaking, the floor is now closed regarding the public hearing regarding ordinance number 24-08. The floor is now open regarding public hearing on ordinance number 24-10. An ordinance to amend the comprehensive plan, future land use map, regarding 5.15 acres located off South Island Road in Georgetown County identified as TMS number 01-10-10-015-00-00, from low density residential to commercial. The floor is now open for a public hearing regarding ordinance number 24-10. If you desire to speak on that particular ordinance, please do so. Seeing no one, the floor is now closed. The public hearing is now closed for ordinance number 24-10. We move down to ordinance number 24-17. An ordinance to adopt the 2024 updated population element as part of the county's comprehensive plan. The floor is now open for a public, for the public hearing on ordinance number 24-17. If you desire to speak, please do so at this time. Seeing no one, floor is now closed. We are going down to appointments of boards and commissions. Instead, we have a nomination for appointment to Midway Fire Rescue Board. Is, who's recommending?
I had, I can go through it if you want.
Thank you.
Chairman Moran, I'd like to recommend that we reappoint Mr. Leland Garth and appoint Mr. Bruce Benson to the Midway Fire District Board.
Thank you. Let's do them one at a time. We have a recommendation to reappoint Mr. Leland Garth to Midway Fire Rescue Board from Councilor McCall. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Anderson. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We also have, we have a motion, motion for?
Motion for Mr. Bruce Benson as well.
Okay. We have a motion from Councilor McCall for appointment of Mr. Bruce Benson to the Midway Fire Rescue Board. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Anderson. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We'll go down to resolutions and proclamations. Resolution number 24-15 to our threats of use of American Rescue Act funding for designated ARPA projects. Madam Administrator.
Yes, sir. Before you is the sixth installment that we're coming before you, and hopefully this is the final one, for monies from the ARPA funds. In 2021, the American Rescue Act Plan was signed by President Biden. $65.1 billion was given as direct aid to counties. Georgetown County's part of allocation was $12 million. The amount that is presented to you tonight is the last of monies that we have available because we are now against the clock that we hope to finish all our projects by the end of the fiscal year. End of, excuse me, end of the calendar year. So we ask council's approval so we can proceed with the projects that are listed.
Thank you. Any questions for Madam Administrator from council? Seeing none, is there a motion for adoption of resolution number 24-15?
So moved.
Moved by Councilor McCall. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Elliott. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Resolution number 24-15 is adopted. We move down to our third reading of ordinances. Ordinance number 24-08. Ms. Richardson.
Thank you. Items 10A and 10B, we will take together. This is a request to rezone seven acres off Grassy Lane in Brownsbury from FA to VR10. This tract has a mobile home in the front of the lot, and the rest of the lot is vacant. This request was to allow for future subdivision of the property into single-family lots. This is not considered to be spot zoning since it's contiguous to some other VR10. And the future land use map shows this area as low density, so a change to the map to medium density is warranted with this request. The commission held a public hearing in March and recommended this rezoning with a four to zero vote. And they also recommended the change to the future land use map. We haven't had any changes to this request since second reading.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Richardson from council? Seeing none, is there a motion pertaining to, we'll take them one at a time, ordinance number 24-08?
So moved.
Move for approval, for adopt, for approval from Councilor Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Newton. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We'll go down to ordinance number 24-09. Is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number 24-09?
So moved.
It's been moved for adoption by Councilor Newton. Is there a second? Second by Councilor Carolina. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Okay, motion carries. We'll go down to ordinance number 24-10. Ms. Richardson.
Yes, sir. Items 10C and 10D, we'll address together as well. This involves one parcel of approximately 5.15 acres on South Island Road. And this request is to go from FA or Forest and Agriculture to FAC, the Commercial Forest and Agriculture District. The applicant made this request in order to develop a boat trailer or storage facility with no new structures proposed for the track. It will fence in order to contain the new development. It is surrounded by FA zoning, and the future land use map designates this property as low-density residential, so a change to commercial is warranted for the request. This is a straight rezoning. There are conditions that would need to be met for the boat storage facility, and those, of course, wouldn't come until after the building permit application was made. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this back in March as well. We had one neighbor there who spoke opposing the request. There were two motions made, one to approve and one to deny, and they both tied two to two. So like we said last meeting, we don't have a clear recommendation from the commission for you. Besides that, we don't have any change. They also tied two to two with the vote on the future land use map change. Beyond that, there are no changes to this since.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any questions for Ms. Richardson from council?
Yes, Chairman. Regarding the process with the Planning Commission, were there any issues brought up concerning environmental, wildlife, increased traffic, tree buffers, anything of concern by the neighboring property owners?
There was one neighbor that spoke, and if I'm remembering her comments correctly, most of her concerns were about safety. She was concerned about the boaters that would be there dropping their boats off and coming in and out in proximity to her home. I think we did talk about buffers. There is sufficient land there for a buffer to be left against her property, and the ordinance would require that as well, as well as the fencing.
Any issue concerning the possibility of repositioning the entrance to the, the business venture? Where would, how, what is the name of the lane that the entrance to the storage area would be?
The name of the lane?
Is it, is it off South Island Road, or is there a side road?
It'll be off South Island Road, yes. Not off. This, the homeowner that spoke lives off that side street, M-E-I-N. But this entrance would be off South Island.
How far is this site from South Island Ferry?
About three miles, Mr. Lumpkin tells me. Two miles.
Two miles, which is one of the busiest landings in the county. And I don't, I don't see the correlation between the boat traffic that's naturally used for the landing than what would be used for the boat's storage. Because they all go down the same road and.
Traffic already there is what you're saying.
The majority of them, I would think, use the South Island Ferry landing.
Yes, sir. I think that's the reason why this, I guess, became a valuable site for that type of development, of course.
Sounds like a good business plan.
Any other questions for Ms. Richardson?
Quick question. We, I think we made an update to the storage facility ordinance. Would those updates apply to this facility?
I think that's only self-storage. This would be open storage, not enclosed.
Okay, thank you.
But if, if they did, yes, then there are some requirements about, I think, how far it needs to be from a residence.
Yes.
But this would not plan to be enclosed.
Okay.
At this time.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number 24-10?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
It's moved by Councilor Newton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Carolina for approval. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We move on down to ordinance number 24-11. Is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number 24-11?
So moved.
Moved by Councilor Carolina for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Elliott. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We move down to ordinance number 24-14. Ms. Richardson.
Yes, sir. This is a request to rezone 16.74 acres off Gallup Road near Andrews. The request is to go from general commercial to heavy industrial HI. This is a vacant track, and the request is in order to allow for a new metal fabrication and machine shop at this location. This would address, the property is currently split-zoned, and this would clean up the split zoning for the track. The property is not located in a flood zone. The future land use map does designate the whole track, the whole 30 acres, as industrial. So no need to the, no change to the future land use map is warranted. This rezoning is in line with other zoning districts in the vicinity near 521, and we feel that the proposed use would fit in with the area. There are not many nearby residents close to this location. The Planning Commission recommended unanimously for this request. There was no one at the public hearing, and we don't have any changes to this since second reading.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any questions for Ms. Richardson pertaining to ordinance number 24-14? Hearing none, is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number 24-14?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
It's moved by Councilor Newton for adoption of ordinance number 24-14. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Anderson. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We move down to ordinance number 24-15. Ms. Richardson.
This is a request to rezone .36 acres in Litchfield Landing from GC to R10, which is 10,000 square foot residential. This is a vacant track, and the applicant made the request to allow for the construction of a new single-family home. As we said at the last meeting, both the GC district and the R10 district allow for construction of a single-family home on a 10,000 square foot lot. The reason for the request is to achieve the smaller setback. GC has a 50-foot front yard setback, and R10 has a 25-foot front yard. So that is why the applicant made this request. This area, this area is shown as transitional on the future land use map, so no change is needed. Planning Commission recommended unanimously for the rezoning with a four to zero vote. And there have been no other changes since second reading.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Richardson regarding ordinance number 24-15? Hearing none, is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number 24-15?
So moved.
Moved by Councilor McCall for approval of ordinance number 24-15. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Anderson. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We will move down to ordinance number 24-17. Ms. Richardson.
Yes, sir. This request is an ordinance that would adopt the 2024 updated population element as part of our comprehensive plan. We're clicking along with these elements, and this is the next one in the list. The last time this plan was updated was 2015. Like we said last meeting, it has been updated based, basically on the census information. There are five-year estimates for 2021. Georgetown County, based on those documents, experienced a 4.71% increase in population, and the current population was 62,992. We haven't had any changes to this since second reading. The goals in the document are listed there in your number eight. The Planning Commission did unanimously recommend approval for the document. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have. It's pretty straightforward information.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any questions for Ms. Richardson regarding ordinance number 24-17?
What's our population number now?
The latest official number is at 62,992. But there may be a more recent estimated number, but that's the official one that's in the document.
Okay. Is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number 24-17? It's moved by Councilor Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Elliott. Any discussion? All in favor of the adoption of ordinance number 24-17, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, we'll, we'll give Ms. Richardson a break. We'll go to second reading of ordinances. Ordinance number 24-18. Ms. Langston, finance director.
Good evening. This is second reading of the fiscal year '25 budget ordinance. We presented the last part of our workshop earlier this evening to you. As presented in the ordinance, you will need to, it was done by first reading by title only, so you will need to amend the ordinance to add the text. Be glad to answer any questions. It does include a 1.2 mil increase for the law enforcement, law enforcement fund. Other than that, it's pretty straightforward.
Thank you, Ms. Langston. Any question for Ms. Langston? Regarding ordinance number 24-18. If not, is there a motion for second reading approval of ordinance number 24-18?
So moved.
Moved by Councilor Elliott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Councilor Carolina. Any discussion? Is there a motion to amend, to incorporate the text since the ordinance was introduced by title only at our first reading? Is there a motion to amend?
So moved.
Moved by Councilor Elliott. Is there a second on the amendment? Second by Councilor Johnson. Any discussion on the proposed amendment? All in favor of the amended motion, please raise your hand. All in favor of the amended motion, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. And we'll go back to the main motion with the incorporated text through the amendment. All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We'll go down to first reading of ordinances. Ordinance number 24-20, to amend the future land use map to reflect the designation, the redesignation of a property located at 7388 Choppie Road in Georgetown County, identified as TMS number 03-0441-012-00-00, from low density residential to medium density residential. Ordinance number 24-21, to rezone 6.3 acres located at 7388 Choppie Road in Georgetown County, identified as TMS number 03-0441-012-00-00, from Forest Agricultural to Village 10,000 square feet residential. Ordinance number 24-22, to rezone approximately .23 acres located off Litchfield Landings in the Litchfield area of Georgetown County, identified as TMS number 04-0134-001-08-00, from general, from general commercial, commercial to 10,000 square feet residential. Ordinance number 24-23, an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2023-24 operating budget of Georgetown County. Ordinance number 24-24, an ordinance to declare surplus real property located on U.S. Highway 521 slash 17A, High Market Street, totaling approximately 125.39 acres adjacent to Edel Park, and designated as TMS number 02-1008-006-00-00, and to authorize the disposition thereof. An ordinance number 24-25, an ordinance to declare surplus real property located off Highway 17 lying along Woolbrook Boulevard and known as the Woolbrook Bike Path, and to authorize the disposition thereof. We will move down to the approval of our minutes from our April 23, 2024 meeting. Is there a motion for adoption of those particular minutes? Moved by Counsel Carolina. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Elliot. Any discussion? All in favor of adoption of our April 23, 2024 minutes? Please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Is there any further business to come before counsel pertaining to our agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Elliot. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel McCotto. Any discussion? All in favor? Please raise your hand. Motion carries. Meeting is not adjourned.